We'll call the meeting to order. Good evening, I am council member and alternate deputy mayor Gary McVeigh, sitting in tonight for Mayor Erickson and council member deputy mayor Ed Stern, who are available. Paulsboro is committed to welcoming a wel- is being a welcoming, diverse and equitable community where all people can access tools and opportunities to improve their quality of life, allowing them to reach their full potential. During its meetings, the Paulsboro City Council will use this lens to inclusively view its discussions and actions. Now if you'd all stand for, oh, I'm sorry, but Mr. Eckert, the land acknowledgement, please.
Yes. Paulsboro is located on the ancestral lands of the indigenous Saquamish people, for whom this this place was known as Tukta Lottz, or the land of the vine maples. Every part of the soil is sacred in the estimation of my people. Every hillside, every valley, every plain and grove has been hallowed by some sad or happy event in days long vanished. That is a quote from Chief Seattle, or Siak, uh, eight from eighteen fifty-four.
Now, if you would stand as you're able for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with the religion and justice of all.
This is the September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Paulsboro City Council. Uh, we now have the agenda review. I am not aware of any changes to the agenda this evening. All right, um, if I could have a motion, please, to approve the agenda.
Uh, move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Mr. Taber?
Taber, aye.
Eckert, aye.
McVeigh, aye.
Crowe, aye.
Noel, aye.
Now it's a public comment time. If you have a public comment for the council, please approach the podium. You have three minutes. The council generally does not reply to citizen comments directly. Any citizens' comments this evening?
Thank you very much. My name is Sharon Budd, and I'm here to ask a couple of questions. Um, I've got some wonderful responses from Rob Gelder. Thank you very much for that, Rob. Um, but I still have some questions about, um, first aid training, which Pam has informed me about the library, um, trying to get the CERT training and the CPR training, which is really, really great. Um, I'm still wondering about the plans from the city as far as I know it takes time to put that all in place, but, um, how are you going to organize the community and for emergency preparedness? It's always emergency preparedness. And, um, I thank you for that time and just have some more questions about how it's going to come about when. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sharon. Other citizen comments?
Good evening, I'm Pam Keeley from Lyons Park. Paulsboro for All has held pro-democracy rallies at Waterfront Park every week for the past seven months without major incident. At every event, we emphasize peaceful protest and reject violence. We reject racism, xenophobia, and hate toward any group, including natives, immigrants, and members of the LGBTQ community. We were relieved when the Pride banners survived this year without attack, and Pride in the park was a joyful, undamaged event. We appreciate your recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month. But we know that extreme prejudice, conflict, and tensions remain barely under the surface in our community. Earlier this month, Paulsboro Pride received a long letter, uh, by the way, from a relative of the former council member. Received a long letter disparaging both Pride events and queerness in general. And since the killing of Charlie Kirk, Paulsboro for All has received several disturbing messages from community members, often grounded in religious intolerance. As the rhetoric heats up on every level, and some of us feel more and more in danger of violence, we are grateful for the city of Paulsboro's support for freedom of speech and following the Keep Washington Working Act. In this time of unprecedented national divisions, we rely on you to follow the law and not bow to pressures, whether they arise from other government officials or members of our own community. Thank you for your service in these difficult times.
Thank you, Ms. Keeley. Other citizen comments this evening? Seeing none, we will move on with the rest of our agenda. We are now on to, uh, mayor's report and council comments. Uh, Mr. Taber, do you have any comments for us this evening?
Uh, hello, no comments from me tonight.
Mr. Eckert?
Uh, yes, so, um, yesterday was a really good day in the city, I have to say. Um, went to a couple of different things. Um, we, we cut the ribbon on Nordic Cottage, which was a culmination of, I think the mayor quoted ten years of effort to get to that point, um, by a whole lot of folks. It was a lot of work on behalf of the mayor, previous council staff, a lot of partners, and it was a great event. Uh, they looked wonderful, and, um, there were multiple folks asking there when they could move in. So I was, I have to admit, I was happy to tell them I had nothing to do with the choice of who gets to move in. So that was, that's not on us. Someone else is making that choice, but lots of questions about it. And so, um, really good event. And then, uh, similar but different, but also kind of a culminating event, um, the presentation from planning about with the ADUs later in the evening, which again is about a specific thing, um, the ADUs that were designed for common use in the county. But I got lots of questions from folks there about all kinds of things that we've been doing, um, the zoning changes we've made, the heights, um, that we've increased, other uses of, of zoning, uh, so the, the interest in the community on how the city can grow the right way is there. Um, I was happy to answer a couple of questions, then point them at our, our stellar staff to answer the hard ones. Um, they've all done great work. Um, it's across the board. Our staff has done amazing work on all these projects. And, uh, it's fully appreciated. Rob brought me, so, um, I had proposed that we do banners for veterans after we had some folks come and talk about they felt that there was a division with the banners before, and I said that we didn't need to be an or, it's an and, um, so we have those now. I'm not going to unroll it all the way because then I have to roll it back up in front of you all, and that won't look pretty. Um, but this is what they look like, so just the US flag. We're going to fly it from, uh, holiday to holiday and leading up to the Veterans Day Parade. So that worked out really well. Thanks, Rob, and staff for helping get those done. Um, today is Constitution Day, for those that don't know. Um, uh, yes, Doug's got his constitution here. He said he was going to read the whole thing, but I guess he decided against it.
Uh, after the meeting.
After the meeting. That'll be the final closing remarks. Um, but I think it's really important to think about that in light of everything that's been going on. You know, the Constitution is the foundation of who we are and what we are. And the Bill of Rights is, you know, enshrined very specific things, the first of which intentionally was the right of free speech. Without it, we aren't America. So, um, we have to pay attention to that. Free speech means speech we like, it means speech we don't like, it means speech we don't agree with, it's still speech. It doesn't mean we, we don't agree with everybody, and we certainly don't support connoting violence. It shouldn't have to be said, but I'm going to say it. Political violence in any form by anyone against anyone is reprehensible and wrong. I don't care who does it, I don't care who it's done against. There's no context, there's no justification, it's wrong. I don't care if it's President Trump or Governor Shapiro. I don't care if it's Charlie Kirk or Paul Pelosi. It's wrong. We need to get past it. So my part, I joined Brave Angels this weekend. If you're not familiar with Brave Angels, it's a nonprofit designed to get people to talk to each other. So I'll be attending my first meeting next month. Um, it's over on Bainbridge. The great news is that their meetings are getting so big, they're asking people to register. So we need to talk to each other. So that's, that's how I'm going to be moving forward. Um, I forwarded a copy of the newsletter to the council. Um, what I really like is that, uh, the author of our community read, Monica Guzman, is highly, is affiliated with this organization. It's got nationwide impact, but the key, again, the key is it's about talking to each other. So that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eckert. Ms. Crowe, comments this evening?
Thank you for sharing your comments. It's always important to hear the voice and passion of the community. Uh, it helps us to just keep a pulse on, uh, and an awareness of, of things that matter. And I'm sorry I missed the Nordic Cottage opening as well as the ADU. I look forward to seeing Nordic cottages when, um, you know, hopefully have another opportunity before, uh, residents take place, but of course, they come first. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Noel?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Um, a couple of things for me, I, uh, yeah, we've been working on the Nordic cottages project the entire six years I've been on council, uh, as well as some years before that. So, uh, I very much appreciated the chance to attend the grand opening this week, and uh, it just felt, uh, really good to, to get that across the finish line. It hasn't been easy. Um, but we, we had a lot of help from a lot of partners, and we had a lot of people for there, um, Chamber of Commerce, pardon me, the Department of Commerce was there, um, Sarah, Tara Simmons was there, we had folks from Housing Kit sap, um, who else? Um, Gateway Church was instrumental, um, just a lot of partners, couldn't have done it without all of them. Pure Sound Energy, uh, we have solar panels, um, the building will be solar. So it's a beautiful facility, beautiful residences, um, uh, there's only eight, it's a good start. We need more, I think we all recognize that. I think one of our challenges going forward will be how do we meet some of our goals and aspirations for affordable housing? Um, these units are beautiful, uh, we had the benefit of having, uh, the piece of land available, um, but at the end of the day, they cost us about five hundred thousand dollars each. And, uh, that may be sustainable going forward, but I think we need to continue to look for, uh, additional ways to try to meet our affordable housing goals. Um, it could be a model, you know, we may need to adapt the model if we want to really have some additional, uh, the number of units that we're going to need. So, and I think we, I think most of us recognize that, but, you know, it, it was, it's a great start, and I just was really impressed with the units, the design, Matthew Coats, uh, the architect was there and talked about his influence and what he was trying to create. So it was really a nice event. And I attended the event last night at the SIP, um, the, uh, open house for ADUs. Who knew that many people wanted to talk about ADUs and planning? It was a really successful event. Uh, and thanks to, uh, uh, to Brooke and Jay Huffman, the owners of the SIP, for hosting us there last night. So, um, I think that's it for me, so.
Sorry, even with notes, I forgot something.
Okay.
Um, I just want to say, so there was, um, uh, some folks organized a little, um, display of, of flags and cheering on September eleventh over on three oh five, um, mostly teenagers, um, just out waving flags to, uh, remember September eleventh, and I just wanted to say thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, now we're on to board commission and outside agency reports. Um, any reports from any council members? Mr. Noel? Okay. Anybody? Okay. All right. Um, I am scheduled to meet with the Newport manager, James Weaver, next week. I think some of you, uh, as well have met with Mr. Weaver, so, uh, I look forward to that and continuing our, uh, spirit of cooperation with the port. We are now on to city administrator and department head comments. Uh, city administrator Gelder, do you have some remarks for us and updates for us this evening?
Yes, thank you. Uh, good evening, council. Just wanted to start off with and echo, uh, council member Eckert's comments about Brave Angels. I've had an opportunity, uh, to do on two different occasions, trainings with them, uh, at conferences, so probably not as involved or intense, uh, as they can be, but the model is, is really, really cool, um, for bringing very disparate conversations and perspectives together. So, um, great to know that they're, they're growing locally. Um, and council member Crowe, you will have an opportunity to probably, we can find a time for you to see the Nordic cottages, um, because one of the things that we probably won't have folks moving in, uh, before the beginning of November, the lifts, the chairlifts that we have on order, they are due probably a month out. So probably by mid, uh, October, those will be in place, and then we'll kind of finish all of the punch list items and be able to move forward. So I echo all of your comments, it was a phenomenal day. Um, the weather was awesome, perfect for a celebration and opening of the Nordic cottages, um, and to see that come to fruition. That same sunny, warm weather made that ADU conversation, there was so much going on, it was a sweatbox, but it was in a good way. Um, I think that the fact that people were kind of voraciously absorbing that information and learning and talking to our staff is phenomenal, and Heather and team did a great job of pulling that together and, and getting what you really need to know about in terms of lending, building, um, the, the legal aspects of things as well. So very cool. So kudos to everyone. Tomorrow, we will be having our annual, uh, employee appreciation barbecue, uh, which will be my first, so I'm, I'm looking forward to having the time to sort of break bread with our staff and, and thank them for everything they do day in and day out in service to our community. And, and lastly, I just wanted to ping you, and I will follow up with an email. Uh, we are looking to try to schedule and our next joint meeting with the port, speaking of the Port of Paulsboro, um, in looking at, uh, the calendar. So whether or not we do sort of one of those fourth Wednesdays again, like we did previously, the October twenty-second with, October twenty-second would be one of, it turned off on its own, I don't know what happened. Um, maybe it was my, my virtual hook, um, of sorts, but the, that fourth Wednesday, I would just, we will ping you to see if that will work for a majority of council members. If you look at the fourth Wednesday for November and December, uh, those are fall right before holidays, and so tho- those will be a little bit more challenging. If October doesn't work, we'll sort of cast the net a little bit wider and look at other nights of the week. So just wanted to give you a heads up, we're trying to, uh, schedule that.
Remind him that the counters will be closed for,
Yes, and for, uh, council as well as community that may be watching our meeting this evening, all of the, the city, uh, counters, the public facing counters will be closed during our, uh, employee appreciation event tomorrow, which is from the hours of eleven thirty to one.
So, Mr. Gelder, uh, uh, the council is generally invited to the picnic. This year, I don't believe we've been invited. I, I did not know if that was purposeful or, uh, just didn't happen. Um, i- if we would be welcome, um, uh, perhaps an invitation could be sent, or if, if not, uh, we will, we won't receive one apparently. I'm trying to handle this as diplomatically as possible.
I'm, I'm going to defer to,
Okay. Um, the, the invitation usually comes from the wellness committee that is organizing the event.
And they've been doing a phenomenal job pulling it together. I apologize, I don't have the history of the invitation protocol, but,
Yes, okay. I just wanted to note that no invitation did, did go out.
I think, um, what happens is number one is we tried to be careful of creating a quorum, but the reality is, is I don't think any invites went out by email this year, and they're more along the posters of posting people and departments just getting the information out. I think, I think they were all kind of overwhelmed with workloads and, and didn't get that step in.
Okay. All right, thanks for the update.
But duly noted, and we'll make sure we, uh,
I will be at work, so I won't be there, so if three of the rest of you want to go, we should, that should standard form.
All right.
If you do, it'll be at eleven o'clock, uh, sorry, eleven thirty at our Public Works Building.
Okay. Uh, finance director Debbie Bore, you have any remarks? Diane, any remarks this evening?
Um, I just wanted to let you know about one thing, and that is that our traffic counters are experiencing issues, and so we do plan to purchase some new ones, and I'd like to take a, um, a budget amendment directly to consent at the next meeting, um, because we want to move forward with getting them right now. It's, um, it's ten thousand dollars, but it's just a minor budget item.
Okay. Could, hmm, is it, could we not just put it on the business agenda for next meeting? Is that possible?
Yeah, we could put it on the business agenda, that would be fine.
Let's do that.
Okay, great.
Okay. All right, Jeff, our park and rec director?
Thank you, council member McVeigh. Good evening, council, good evening, citizens, uh, community members. One moment here while I share just a slide update. I only have two updates to share. I have it, it's working. Send request. Brooks, I might need your help at the request, how to share.
Maybe while we're doing that, Chief Harding, do you have any updates or things to share with us this evening?
I do have just one, uh, brief update regarding the camera, uh, system that's going to be activated at Bond and three oh five. And I almost hesitate to share this because I've been given so many different dates and times, but this is the latest, and I feel pretty confident it's accurate. Uh, September twenty-ninth, construction and power will be completed. Warning period of thirty days starts October third. So those are the most recent information that I've got.
All right. Thank you for that, chief. Uh, Mr. Taber?
And just to clarify, that's a, a red light only camera, correct?
That's correct.
Bond and three oh five, all right.
And Jeff, I just wanted to pass on the chief real quick. Um, I met with a constituent before the meeting this evening, talking about a, a particular street, and she shared that she'd had the concern about police vehicles on that street, reached out to the department and got, someone called her back right away, talked about, you know, how police vehicles should be driving on our streets, was very happy with the response and the communication from the department, so I just want to mention that.
Okay, back to Jeff Osmond, Jeff?
Thank you again. Uh, so we have, uh, a temporary closure of Wilderness Park, a tree fell, and it just happened to land on the crossing, uh, of the, of the crossover there. So that park is closed for the, um, um, short period while Public Works assesses this. They went down there just to see the damages. This is right before the rainy season, of course. Uh, and this is, we put it out on social media, we put it out to our channels, just want to make sure our community knows, it's signed, it's flagged. We don't want someone not paying attention and falling into this, and you can see the damage from that tree. It was just, um, um, perfect, actually. So Public Works is assessing this. As soon as we have an update on when it will be replaced, we will update, um, council staff and our, uh, our community. The other update is a little bit more positive, and that is a reminder that this Saturday is the ribbon cutting for the skate park rebuild, and that's at ten AM. We have Representative Tara Simmons, we have, um, a partner at the Saquamish Tribe, council member McVeigh has RSVP'd. If, if folks haven't reached out to Rhiannon or I, please let us know if you're coming. And then we also have Rotary there and our Skate Park Advisory Group who will be speaking. And there's going to be a skate jam to follow, so if you would like to bring your board and try the elements, you are welcome to. I will not be. Um, well, maybe, we'll see, if, if they can help me, I, I will try. I've, I've not been successful since I was seven, and that's not too many years ago. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm looking forward to the skate jam myself. Uh, any other updates from department heads? Rhiannon Brooks? Okay, all right, thank you. We are now on to the consent agenda. I want to call your attention to, um, item C on the consent agenda. Uh, I'm sorry. Um, yes, it is item C. The Software Enterprise Resource Planning Management Software Selection Consultant Agreement. Um, as you recall, we talked about this at our previous meeting, um, and, uh, a few minor changes needed to be done to the agreement, um, with the, uh, the vendor. And, um, I'm going to have Deb Bore just talk a minute about what changes are here, and then if you're comfortable leaving it on consent, we can do that, or if we need to pull it off and have a broader discussion about it, um, we can do that too. Okay? So Deb, can you please highlight for us, uh, uh, what, what's changed, and there were some minor changes from the first time we saw this?
Correct. We, um, the change in the pricing and the change in the services provided, there are no changes. When I put this before our city attorney, she recognized that they sent a proposal and not a formal consultant agreement. So what you have in your folder is the same proposal with the consultant agreement attached. And just so you know, this vendor is on the MRSC Small Works roster, so they fall under all of the required, um, necessary requirements for the city. So that, that is what's changed.
And I, and I did confirm with Deb that the amount of the agreement is not changed, it remains, um, approximately eighty-four thousand dollars. So, um, I know some of you had a chance to look at this prior to our start of our meeting. Are we comfortable leaving this on this consent and moving forward with the approval of the entire consent agenda, or would you like to pull this off? Any objections? All right. Uh, with that then, I will entertain a motion for approval of our consent agenda, uh, items eight, A through C.
Move to accept consent agenda, items A through C.
Second. Mr. Taber?
Taber, aye.
Eckert, aye.
McVeigh, aye?
Oh, aye.
Noel, aye.
All right, thank you, council. We are now on to our business agenda, and the first item on our business agenda is a tree board appointment. Uh, Rhiannon Fernandez, our city clerk, is going to highlight this for us. And before I do that, is, um, just a minute. Uh, is Ashley Lloyd here with us tonight?
She was unable to make it with us tonight, she's reading in Seattle.
Okay.
So.
All right, Rhiannon, you want to go ahead?
Thank you. The mayor has appointed the following board member, and she seeks council's concurrence tonight. It's Ashley Lloyd for an appointment to a vacated position with a term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-seven. And just to note, the city is still looking to fill two additional vacant positions on the tree board. The motion in the packet was wrong, we needed to confirm the mayor's appointment to the tree board, not the Parks and Recreation Committee as presented, committee as presented.
Yeah, so when it comes time for the motion, we'll just have to make that language change. Okay, folks? Um, you have in your packet, uh, Ms. Lloyd's application, uh, her letter of interest, and, um, the mayor has made the appointment and is seeking council concurrence. Uh, any questions about the tree board appointment? All right, and someone like to make a motion?
We're changing the motion, correct?
Yeah.
We are changing the motion from an appointment to Parks and Rec Commission to the tree board.
Perfect. Move to confirm the mayor's appointment to the tree board as presented.
Second.
All right, Mr. Taber?
Taber, aye.
Eckert, aye.
McVeigh, aye?
Crowe, aye.
Noel, aye.
Thank you, council. I did vote. Yeah, McVeigh, aye. Yeah, I did, I did, I guess I'm being too soft tonight. All right, our next business item agenda is, uh, discussion about the Osted Cavellsted Pavilion down in Waterfront Park, um, discussing a engineering consultant contract for assessing the condition of the pavilion. And this is Jeff Osmond.
Thank you, council. What you have in front of you is we have a, the city has selected a consultant to, to do a assessment of the beloved Osted Cavellsted Pavilion down at Waterfront Park. The fund, it's funded through the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, as it's a, um, main tourist destination. The work needs to be completed before the end of the year, and what we are seeking, and what the consultant will be doing is they'll be taking a look at the, the structure, uh, the timbers, the joists, they'll be also, um, figuring out the load capacities for seismic, for wind, earth, snow, you name it, and giving a report back to the city of its current status, if there's any priority repairs, and how to extend that life of the structure, uh, well into the future. And what we're looking for is, um, authorization to point the mayor to approve that contract and move forward with Railstar. Railstar is also the same consultant who worked on Oyster Plant Park's assessment, for council's knowledge.
And, and I think I noted in the packet, uh, Jeff, that, uh, we did, we did issue an RFP for this project, and so I'm, am I correct in assuming that Railstar was the little bit? And so I'm, am I correct in assuming that Railstar was the little bidder or you're a little bidder? Can you share that with us?
Yes, I can. So we partnered with our, we partnered with our partners in engineering. And there were five respondents to the, the RFP that went out. And very qualified firms, it came down to the top two, and Railstar necked that out. We gave them a call and discussed it with them as they had, through the grading of, internal grading of how folks were. They were the ones who were the most qualified. But what was great is we also had several other really highly qualified firms, staff reached out and offered to walk future projects so they could see what's coming down the line and kind of put it on their radar. And it also helps inform our city staff of approximate costs and timelines. And we expect those in-person walks to happen later this fall based on their availability.
Thank you very much. So you noted in your materials that the contract amount for Railstar is $35,520. I noted as well that the contract has to be completed by the end of the year. And does anybody remember when the pavilion was built, the year it was built?
I know this. I have to look it up because I don't want to be wrong on it.
I know we've made some repairs over the years.
We believe it's the 70s. I'll find out. It's in my tongue.
Okay, all right. I, I know sometime recently we had to repair some of the, the boards on the stage, as I recall. And I think Bill Austin has made some repairs to the, to the posts in recent years. So it's starting to show its age, I think we all know, and it's obviously a heavily used facility for the city. Do people have questions about the contract? Go ahead, Mr. Eckert.
Yeah, not really a question, just that, yeah, well, Memorial Day, we, the mayor discovered a section that was, was about to let someone go through it, and that, that was part of the floorboards added. So we had to do a quick tape off and keep the band from setting up in that spot. And so, yeah, it's, it's starting to show its age. And so, like Jeff said, it's a central point to, as, as much as we're loving Rob, uh, Waterfront Park to death, as the grass goes, I think the pavilion's getting its lion's share as well. So I think, yeah, this is a good move to see what we need to do because I don't see Bill building us another one anytime soon. So we need to figure out what we need to do.
Any other questions for Mr. Osment?
I'm happy to make a motion if.
Please.
Move to approve the consultant contract for Railstar Engineering in the amount of $35,520.90 for a condition assessment of the Austin Cavellstad Pavilion and authorize the mayor to sign the contract on behalf of the city.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Tabor?
Tabor, aye.
Eckert, aye.
McVeigh, aye?
Pro, aye.
Noel, aye.
All right. Thank you, Council. That ends the business agenda portion of our meeting. Would you like to take a five-minute break before we get down to the table or continue on? Continue on? Okay, all right. So we'll just take a few minutes and we'll meet down at the workshop table. The first item on our workshop agenda this evening is an update on the Placer AI software that the city has purchased. That's going to help us with tracking tourism, where people are coming from. I had the benefit of getting, having a presentation at our last LTAC meeting, and I was quite impressed with some of the, some of the data tools available to us. So Jeff is going to give us an update here today.
Thank you, Councilmember McVeigh. Good evening, Council. Good evening, community members. It's my pleasure to share a little bit of information about Placer AI. And as Councilmember McVeigh said, this is a visitor economics metrics tool. If you have questions, I would encourage, if it's appropriate, to just ask as we go through it. There's only 15 slides. It's, there's a rich history here, but this is just the tip of the iceberg. So just a fast overview, it's a software tool. We are subscribed this year. We have, the city is putting in, has submitted a request to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee for the next funding cycle to fund next year so we have more time to learn about its capacities and capabilities. Is that, is that feedback? Can you hear me okay? Okay, great. Thank you. It's a little different audio up here. It has a lot of different uses and hopefully the data and the metrics and the graphics will demonstrate that. But really what it helps do, do is it shows if you put a geographic zone, you can figure out who's visiting that zone, at what frequency, where they came from, how long they stayed. And it uses proprietary algorithms and cell phone data on this. So let's take a look, and I picked a, pick one that's fairly appropriate. Waterfront Park and Anderson Parkway. So the geographic zone, hopefully that you see behind me, shows what we built around there. We can do the same thing for any type of area. So there's a special event over at, Kids' Day was over at Home Depot area. We could, we could do that. We could do it for different economic zones or other parks as well.
Yeah, so we, we can set multiple ones and run, like if we were curious to see in the area, like who's coming to O'Hava to shop? We could set that zone and get.
As long as it's large enough, as long as there's enough data. Recently, I just ran a report for how many people came to the pump track because we were curious when we're talking to Evergreen. And it gave us information and it was eye opening to see that. So yes, as a short answer. So this data is for, you can set it for one day, couple hours. For this data and this demonstration, it's a rolling 12 months. So it's from September 1st of '24 through the end of August this year. So fairly darn recent for the last 12 months. Again, please pay attention to the geographic zone. It's the park and the parking, so the parking lot. What you're going to see here, and this is one of the loading screens on it. And this is a presentation as it, a couple of things. First, there's a lot of people who come to Waterfront Park. I think we all know this question. People. So it's, it's phones, right? So, so what it is, it's a cell phone. And people can opt out of like, hey, please don't track me on your cell phone. And then it takes all that information and they have their own algorithms. And then based if it's, if it's a park or a sports stadium or a library or something along those ways, and then it uses their algorithms. So what it's showing us is a little less than half a million people. But unique visitors are a little bit more than half of that. So what's neat about this is if you look above my right shoulder, you'll see the visits. That means people are coming at least twice, which is really neat. And the dwell time, they're staying in that geographic area for roughly almost an hour. What it doesn't tell us is how long they're spending outside that area. So if they're walking downtown, if they're getting on a boat, if they're going on the boardwalk. But you can expand that zone. And we've done some data that is not in this presentation of, you know where the Halloween walk goes, down Front Street, Jensen. We've taken a look at a larger economic zone, and it's possible to do things like that. But for today, this is if they've spent over 10 minutes in that zone. That's the key point. I did run just curiosity, under 10 minutes too. It's, it's not that different for data. This is where it gets fun. I don't know about anybody else, but I love data. I think the data-driven decisions, it's really neat to nerd out on this. So if I may, so we have two big spikes. What is the largest spike? Yeah, Viking Fest. Yeah, that's a really easy one. What's the smaller spike? I had to look this up. It's on October 5th of last year. Year run with the marathon. It's when we had two events at the same time. We're not doing that, by the way, in the future. But it shows, look at the sheer amount of use and the impacts to our community and our businesses down there. When you have two events run at the same time, it spikes pretty heavily in that October. I was curious. It also gives us an algorithm, how, a year-over-year comparison. So 22, 23, 24, how many people are down there? Really fascinating. And there's toggles and you can figure out more information. But again, this is just first blush presentation. Here's what I love. So when are people down there? There's really no surprise. Saturdays, Sundays, you know, it's popular Fridays. But what this is helpful for is for event organizers. Again, it's an economic data tool, is when should events be programmed? Or, or when should maintenance be done when there's less people down there, for instance? It's, it's helpful to have this information. I don't know why Wednesday's so low, but that could be an opportunity to do maintenance. It could be an opportunity to move an event there as well because there's not as many impacts. It's helpful information. I did skip, I did skip one. Okay, let me just make sure I'm not going too fast. Great. We could also figure out the times. Really, 10:00 AM to about 7:00, 8:00 PM is the core zone of when people, again, when people are spending more than 10 minutes, right? The average is 52 minutes, but more than 10 minutes in that zone. And it gives us a good snapshot. What's fascinating to me, and I took a screenshot of this, is in, in 365 days, there were roughly 4,000 people who happened to be there at 1:00 AM for over 10 minutes. Interesting. Maybe they're picking up their cars. Maybe it's a, a late night. Who knows? But it's, most of the people are there between 10:00 AM and 7:00 PM.
Does the locational data combined with that 4,000 allow us to determine if those are residents?
Oh, okay, it gets even better. So there are ways to, so, so this data, this is visitors. So you have a cell phone. That means that that cell phone predominant, I'm going to get to that question. It's actually, I'm going to answer it in two slides. So if I don't, just wait. Okay, so here's the other part. This is showing where people are coming from predominantly for these visits. And it's just doing zip codes. I zoomed out a little bit. There's what percentage of folks are coming to that geographic area for over 10 minutes? Again, that was the parameters. And it's, it's interesting. It's, it's a lot of our, our local surrounding area, but we're pulling in from the region as well. And, and as well as doing heat maps, we have a, a little bit more detail. Again, this is zip codes. Here we're looking at where specifically. I do want to point out for our, for council's awareness and our community's awareness, the, the very bottom text behind me that this is randomly placed within a census block. So it's not pinpointing my house or someone's own residence. It's saying you're generally in this area. And so again, it's a general idea of this.
So a couple of things just based on what you've shown. So we had 400,000 plus visits last year. Not visitors, 400,000. 25% of them, 100,000 of them came from 98370.
112,000 came from the zip code of Pulseville, yes.
Yes, so that meant 75% came from outside of our zip code of the visits.
Two more slides and you're gonna, you're gonna like this. I didn't mean to cut you off, Councilmember.
No, it's, it's all right. I'm used to it. Go ahead.
So if I understand correctly, it's recording visits due to the amount, the time, duration. It's not recording folks that may be coming from Bremerton to work at Walmart or coming from Bremerton to, you know, work at Olympic College.
Correct. And I'm going to answer that. I think that's important distinction. So it's correct only who spent 10 minutes in this specific geographic area. And, and I'll go back to Councilmember Eckert's question. It's counting visitors. That means that what, what they look at is they look at a cell phone. And where does that cell phone live the majority of its time, right? Monday through Friday? Where does it live? If it lives outside of that zone, let's say in Bremerton, they know that you're visiting from Bremerton. And it populates this, and it populates here as well. If it, if it knows that you're, that cell phone predominantly Monday through Friday is usually in forks, it's going to show that you're a visitor. There's a toggle where you can say you're a resident, where it's, you, if we did a bigger zone than the smaller one. Let's say we said all of downtown and surrounding streets, Sixth and Seventh and whatnot, where we have residential units. If a phone is in that Monday through Friday, they'll count you as a, as a resident instead of a visitor because the phone's there. And the third toggle is if that phone is in the zone Monday through Friday, eight to five, the working hours, it knows that you're working. I mean, that, that's, that's the assumption because it's the working hours compared to being there in the evening where you'd be sleeping. Very good question. So for today, it's just visitors is the data that I'm showing. This is the slide I think that you will enjoy. So part of, this is funded through the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. The Lodging Tax Advisory Committee is motivated by making sure that it's supported by taxes of lodging. So when people are putting heads in beds, when they're paying for VRVO or one of our great local hotels. And ideally, the city has this software and equipment. So we can work with our smaller or any size event organizers who apply for lodging tax. But many of these may only have one staff person, or they may be all volunteer, and say, hey, listen, I just ran a, a sardine tasting event on the waterfront, and I, I don't have enough, you know, support to figure out where people came from. We could plug in the dates and the times. We could say, listen, there are some sardine lovers in Chicago, Dallas, and Phoenix, and San Diego that came. And it shows where people came and visited for that amount of time. And that's, that's actual data to show that it's pooling from there. So here, folks are coming from all over the country, except not very much in the Dakotas or Wyoming or Iowa, to Waterfront Park. Now, I'm not a transportation guy, but I'm becoming one, I think. So heads up engineering. This is neat to see where people are traveling to. What matters about this is road closures, parades, where we're doing, where we're doing things for safety, where we're talking about, maybe we're going to be doing decorations. How do folks arrive and what routes do they use? Or if we have a temporary closer because of construction or development, it tells us the routes. And then we can adjust those routes and pick a new timeframe and see if traffic has shifted. But it gets better. This is, we're getting close to the end of these slides, by the way. So this shows where folks are coming from to get to this zone and the avenues that they travel.
All right. So you stopped me before. Can I ask questions on this slide? Because I have questions, still have some other questions.
Yes.
So when I, when I, when I see this slide, back to the number of visits, this to me looks like Viking Fest is driving this because Front Street's closed.
Okay.
Right? We're, we're going around Skid, Pulseville Place is driving that. And so I wonder what this, and again, there's 100 questions to be asked, Jeff, when you get into the transportation. But if you exclude Viking Fest weekend, which to me, that's what's showing, normally the traffic wouldn't come down fourth and Jensen. It wouldn't come up and around there. Majority of the traffic's coming down, or at least to be even. Wonder what it would look like if you pulled that data off?
So two things. One, we can, we can definitely pull that data. I'm not going to do it in real time.
No, 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 I just.
But what I will say is Front, Front isn't closed. It's really hard to see, but is my cursor showing up behind me? Okay, that's Front right here. So Front is not closed. This is 12, and to make sure I'm understanding your question. There's 12 months of data. So Viking Fest is three days. The 362 days is showing that Front is still used.
So this is number of visits. What's, does not, if it's the green along Front as we go along the waterfront, why that's only 5,000 to 13,000 visits compared to 100,000 are going back and around Jensen? I got to drive that that's not normal behavior. That's because we've had closures that are driving that, that behavior on that, at all those visits.
So we can remove the outlier data points, right? And see, so if we accumulate that or remove it.
And I don't want you to answer that today. We had this discussion before. But it's that level, as I look over towards, you know, the, the transportation folks, Diane. It's, you know, what is actually going on and driving that behavior? So interesting. So keep going. I'll get back to my other questions.
Great, because I only have one more slide.
Okay.
I have two, actually. And, well, three, but.
Okay.
Next data. This is, this is fascinating. So before I launch into this, and this, I'm, I'm aware of our time. We only know the tip of the iceberg of what this software is capable of. Because it takes staff time to learn this, even working with someone holding our hand. And it's, it's, it's challenging based on, as you're well aware of, how many, how much all our team is juggling for all the different projects. So if, if any of this data is very intriguing, again, there's more we can learn. This is fascinating. Here's what I want to show you. So what you saw just a moment ago is the rolling 12-month data. Remember September through August? This, and it gave a little disclaimer at the bottom, is the 23 data. I don't know why it does that. Maybe it takes two years to do. But this is where it gets fascinating. So it, I mean, one second, I, I got fancy. There we go. This shows us in 12 months that about 1,400 cars went up King Harold to access this geographic, right for this zone. This shows us how many cars go down Front Street in the rolling 12 months. Very few go down Third, which was surprising. Again, this is per, per day, how many cars. And again, it's an algorithm, so it's a per. And again, it's an algorithm, so it's perfectly accurate. Nobody gives you a pretty good settlement. But I do know that I've seen other reports that we've we've run for 305. And that's, is that roughly about how many cars go down 305? Yeah.
Yep.
And so it was me just being really curious about this. What's fascinating is, and this is just a snapshot of our downtown area. But think of the potential, again, with the hat on, because this is lodging tax funded. If an event organizer, if the, when the perk is ready and we're running things, we want to figure out how how people are accessing the perk and their parking or they're moving or they're or how long they're staying or any one of our other. And I'm a park guy, parks, great, but any other geographic zone, we can, the data, the tools are here for for us to learn from. Questions on this line before we get to the next one?
No, I gotta drive you backwards once you get to the end, so go ahead.
Yeah, like it does say, because I think if we take those two spikes out, I think that one map does change. But what I'm interested in, I know this is for visitors and tourists and things. But I think some of this data, even this one here, could color our conversations about Third and Front and what we do downtown, when we get to the point of when we're really going to have a in-depth conversation about what to do down here. Because if that Jensen path doesn't change when we take out Viking Fest, then I think some of our assumptions about where our drivers go have to change. And maybe signage and maybe our flows. So I like this for a lot of uses because I think it's showing us data that we didn't have before. So I love for you to play with all the toggles and give us all the maps because I think it will be very useful as we, all these studies that Josh has going on start to come together. And we need to make real decisions about the downtown core.
So potentially a word of caution, I mean, in terms of just how much transportation, you rely on it for transportation planning, we're just having a conversation with Diane. I don't know, and you can correct me, Jeff, does it make a distinction based on mode of transportation?
Not currently, not that I'm aware of.
So it is lumping the walkers, bikers, cars altogether. There's some distinction in assumptions based on you think it's at a home or a business, et cetera. But those are all assumptions that.
Yeah, and I'd agree that sunset stuff, sunset to Jensen, that could be a lot of people walking because of the closures, so.
And and I would caution as well, this is, again, I'm not a transportation person, but this gives us a sense that then we, then I would, I would expect we would ground truth, like, is that data accurate? And and we could ground truth and say, oh, it is aligning or it's way off for whatever reason. And it could be so grain of salt on the data right now because it's a starting point.
Yeah, so, oh, so go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, Gary.
No, I was just, I was going to ask Jeff if he could just finish the slides and because I have some questions that aren't slide specific. So do you have a question that's slide specific or Doug?
He said he was going to answer it, but that's fine. I'll, we'll go back. Let's go to Gary and then I'd like to finish my questions on the slide.
Okay. So just go ahead and let's finish the slides. You said you only had a couple left.
Second to last.
Okay.
So you can see the the it applied, comply very well to special events, mainly for the Polespo Tourism Grants, time spent locations, but also grant opportunities. This is a powerful tool as we work for funding mechanisms to to stretch our municipal dollar. We can show, just for instance, I ran the pump track data when I was talking to Evergreen Mountain Bike Alliance, how many users there are. So when funding funders say, oh, that's the impact that this area could have, it gives us some data which is really helpful for that. I find that just really powerful. Parks and Trails Management, of course, about who's using what parks. And then I'm not a traffic impact planner, but for for events, it helps us know, hey, if you wanted to shut down 305 to run a parade, you're probably going to affect 33,000 cars a day. Questions?
All right, Doug?
Yes, so could you go back to, let's see what slide I meant, slide eight, please.
I don't have the, you can just tell me when to stop. I don't know what number there.
Four, go, keep going, keep going, stop, go back. Okay, so just looking at visits, not visitors, because you don't have the visitors data broke down. We had approximately 400,000 visits in the previous 12 months. That was from two slides prior to this. This breaks down, where did the visits come from, not visitors? So 100 and so came from 98370, so 25%. It would be interesting to me, I mean, one is 75% of our visits downtown are from outside of the local area. What percentage of the visitors of the 212, whatever unique visitors are outside? Because it gets into some of the discussions we've been having about how do you access downtown? Many places where we see heavy traffic, it's the same people every week. Or it's the same people every day because it's a commuting pattern and it's affected. This is showing us that we have a very, a small subset are regular visitors. Am I reading that right?
That's one way. I submit this is a little bit broader, but yes.
And so of the visitors, and so then that gets into how do we communicate with those visitors? Back to the logic, how do we access special events? And at both, what are they? But how do we get to those special events? Because it seems like our level of communication needs to be higher because we, it looks like we have a lot of people on an annual basis that are hitting us once, once or twice a year. Just if I try to marry those two slides, 400,000 visits, only 100,000 from Polespo. The rest are coming from outside. And 200 and some thousand visitors, but we only had 400,000 visits. And so there's a subset that are driving it, the employees. But it'd be interesting to kind of wander into that to try to go, all right, how many people are we seeing only once or three times a year? From the standpoint of how then do we communicate where to park? Where are the buses, everything else?
Yeah.
So that's, that's where I was kind of half looking over here. It's, okay, that piece, well, it's important. We, I've been pushed back hard that everybody knows where to park. This is showing that the majority of the people visiting here, it might be their first time this year.
Okay, yeah, all right. And you got the question answered, you want it, right?
No.
Okay.
Data is not there. I just, I teen it up that I think, and we don't need to bring it back for us. All I'm suggesting is I think it would be interesting to know how many people are unique visitors trying to sort out how to engage in downtown. This is, I wouldn't have expected the data to be this way, Gary.
Yeah, it's, as you can see, I think it's going to be a really helpful tool. As the new chair of the LTAC Committee, it's going to really help our committee members because, you know, one of our biggest tasks, of course, is finding out is the money impacting spending and hotel visits in the way that we want it to? So you can see how this is going to help us. And then my question, Jeff, my recollection is we're making this data, the software available to nonprofits and other organizations in the city that that work, that sponsor events, events in the city. Is that correct?
No, upon request, we're not proactively sending reports without any communication. But for instance, there have been several organizations who have been fairly actively engaged. May I use an example?
Sure.
So Greg Enright, who I think is the president of the Cultural Northwest, the three-day fairs are down on the waterfront. If you remember one of the, I think the one in August had a really terrible day of rain.
Yes.
And he asked me to run a report from, you know, he compared the last Sunday compared to the Sunday they had all the, because they saw low turnout and you want to see the data. And the data supported that, yeah, Sunday usually has a lot higher. But because it was so darn rainy, there was a lower turnout. So the data very helped verify why they had lower attendance. It was, it was weather related.
Great, yeah. All right, well, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. If you have other questions, you have other questions, okay, go ahead, Mr. Taper.
I saw in there that you could download the CSV. So I assume we get, even after the, our deal with Plaster is over, we get to have access to all this raw data. So like, let's say, in many years down the road, we can still refer back to this.
So the way Placer works is we go in, we set the parameters, and then it does, generates a report. So the report, yes, we can do, but the access to the raw data to generate the report, no.
No, okay. And then I doubt it, but is it control for, you kind of mentioned some of these, but is it control for outages and outliers? Like if there's a cell phone tower out and T-Mobile's down for 24 hours? It's like, oh, no, all our visitors are gone on this day, but really it's just a technical issue?
We can ask Placer to help with that. Yeah, but they're, they're better users than I am. I'm still tip of the iceberg.
And then, and then, so you briefly spoke on my last question. Boats, bikes, et cetera, again, it covered bikes, but no boats, boat parking to.
Oh, interesting.
Because the port has data on how many visitors we have by a boat. So you can kind of use that to supplement the data you're seeing at Anderson Parkway.
We can ask, again, I think that, that, you know, we'll speak with city administrator Gelder, have this data available, and we'll get a little bit of direction based on capacity, what we can learn from this. But they are supposed to have a new feature with trails. We can see walking corridors. But you know how developers are with features, they're, they're always promised and they never come.
All right, Rick, did you have one else?
Yeah, especially with the map that shows a lot of the visitors from further away. Our biggest hotels are not in that area. So I'm just curious, and I said, you know, I asked about Ojha because of the bigger stores for kind of the traffic that's coming in there, but that's also where our biggest hotel is. And then we have two other hotels along 305, yeah, 305. So I just, I'm just curious because I know you purposely looked at just downtown. But I would assume that folks coming from out of state, probably a greater percentage are in those bigger hotels than our smaller boutique hotels downtown. So I would just be curious how that all ties together to shows, you know, the map you had to show the country and some of these faraway folks probably are staying outside the corridor or potentially walking down there like Doug's saying, they don't know where to park. But just as we can start to tie all that together, I think, I think there's a lot of, a lot of interesting things to be pulled out of this that we can use to not rely on, but certainly educate our decisions going forward.
Yeah, and I think just Jeff said, we just started scratching the surface really, yeah. So, all right, well, Jeff, thank you. It's a great tool, a great tool and wonderful. All right, our next agenda item is questions and concerns of the council and future agenda items. Anybody have anything? Mr. Noel?
Yeah, just curious, do we have, Deb, Rob, a date scheduled to bring back discussion on the BNO tax?
That will be part of the revenue discussion as well as we were waiting for the state to finalize the model BNO ordinance because we will have to update our ordinance according to what the state.
And the revenue discussion is?
It's the public hearing talking about the 2026 revenues. And so I believe it is set in October.
Okay.
And so we'll bring it back then.
We'll see it in a couple of weeks.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else? I was going to note, maybe we could do a little cleanup on the future agenda items. We have listed still Nordic cottages, operations and maintenance from this past June that can be eliminated, Brandon. The car homeless parking, I need to gather some more information about that. I won't go into detail about it right now, but I'm still waiting to hear back on a couple, from a couple of our partners on that. And then we just talked about the semi-annual joint meeting with the Port of Polespo. And the Pacer AI can, yes, Pacer AI briefing can be eliminated as well. All right, I did have one item. I think I would like to put on the future agenda. And that is just an update conversation about short-term rentals in the city. Or as you may recall from the housing, housing action plan that we completed several months back, there was no real data on how many short-term rentals we have in the city of Polespo. And we had asked our planning staff to start tracking those numbers. One of the proposals, the applications we got this week, in fact, from the LTAC, people who are seeking LTAC grants, they used to figure that there are 278 short-term rentals in Polespo. Now, I'm sure that's just Polespo zip code, probably not the Polespo city limits. But I think it's something we need to keep an eye on. And so I would like to add that on a future agenda. I attended a session, I think Mr. Gelder might have been in the same session at our AWC conference recently in the Tri-Cities. The mayors of Leavenworth and a council member from Port Angeles spoke to us about the rapid growth that they have had in short-term rentals, what it's doing to some housing prices and some other, in their terms, ill effects it's having on their communities. And I just think we need to keep an eye on it. I think probably a lot of us use short-term rentals. And we do receive lodging tax from short-term rentals. So I'm not trying to cast them as the bad guy here, but I think it is an issue that we need to keep an eye on. And as we know, a lot of cities have waded in and started to regulate those in more ways. We're not really regulating them, to my understanding, a great deal at all right now. But I think it's a conversation worth having because one thing I was left with in that conference session was the mayor Leavenworth and the council member from Port Angeles said they got started too late in trying to, you know, make the best use of those and trying to find the right balance for their communities. And I don't want to miss that opportunity, so. And Rob, you have comments about that?
If I, if I could, yes. So I had an initial conversation with Heather. We're going to be meeting probably in the next couple of weeks to start to scope out that conversation a little bit more to, you're right, there's a lot of different data points out there. And we have to figure out what truly is the city of Polespo within city limits because I've seen everything from 60 short-term rentals to 400 and some odd short-term rentals. So the data source, as we know with Placer, it really makes a difference as to sort of how you're slicing that and making sure we're asking the right questions. But we have done some initial research about possible ways of approaching and defining the the problem, so to speak. Because the nexus for us really is, as we continue, and I think was the, the point that Leavenworth made, for every new unit they had permitted and had built, it got absorbed into the short-term rental market, so they never addressed their local housing needs. And so as we bring on ADUs and try to expand our housing stock, we don't want to necessarily lose our housing stock disproportionately to some other use. Otherwise, we're not getting ahead, so.
Thanks, Rob. And I will try to remember, if I don't do it, Rob, just remind me. I will send you the data point that's in the lodging tax application. It is from a countywide tourism organization. So I'm not sure where they got it, but it's, it's somewhat perhaps a reliable source. So, all right, any other questions, concerns of council or future agenda items? Mr. Eckert?
Yeah, just wanted to let you all know. So I am going, in October, I'm going to a conference put on by the Rental Housing Association of Washington, which is mostly small, middle landlords, so one, two, three unit type. And so there's some interesting topics that are on the schedule that, one of them being manufactured home parks. I'm definitely going to attend that session, but I will, I will be on the lookout. I'm going to check the schedule again and see if short-term rentals is something else.
Great.
But there's some interesting speakers there, some of our local legislators will be there. And so just, that is on the 22nd of October, so if you schedule, I will not be here for that. But that's fine. But yeah, just, I'm going to go sit over in Bellevue for two days and learn some more about housing.
Okay, great. All right, anything else? All right, our next agenda item is continued public comments from citizens. Any other final comments from citizens? You have three minutes, state your name for the record.
Evening, council. My name is Michael Fitzpatrick. Nice to see you all. I've been really interested in the housing conversations you all have been having. And I just wanted to add a comment that I'd love to see maybe spoken to in the months to come. There's two parts to this. The first is that me and my family were part of many residents who make too much money to qualify for affordable housing programs, but not enough to afford a house. So we need to see some plans for how we're going to close the gap for the people who are in between those two metrics. And the other is I have a lot of neighbors who are considering retire, well, assisted living housing options and who are finding that the options available are not affordable either. So I want to make sure that we're not forgetting that we have a lot of older citizens who also need affordable housing and are struggling. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzpatrick. Any other final comments from citizens tonight? All right, any other final comments from council members before we adjourn? All right, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
We'll adjourn.
I have a second? We have a second? Oh, in favor? Alright, thank you, council.